April 27, 2021. To order at 5:04 PM. And for opening procedures, if you would rise for allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I would like to read the land acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichen Yum, Oikma, Carkin, Aloney peoples, and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. And with that, we'll go to item number one A, which is roll call. Dr. World, do you take the roll call, please?
The trustee Reckler.
I am here.
And trustee Gonzalez Hoi is going to be here in a little bit.
Yes, we heard that he did call and he said that we were late. I also have a hard stop. It's at like 6:55 because I have a seven o'clock.
Yeah, I do as well with LCAP tonight.
Okay, yeah, and I can't go to that. I booked something else because that wasn't on my calendar. So I'll have some problem for that. And as well, any introductions and guests today?
So today we have Jessica Oslap from our legal firm. Normally, we have Ed Sklar, but Jessica is going to be our Ed today as we start talking about looking at board policy 0420.4. We've done some work on that. And so she will be able to answer any questions as we go through it.
Great, well, good, welcome. So thank you for being here. And okay, so that's it on one A. Which is approval of the agenda. So I do approve the agenda, but I'd like to start with, since trustee Gonzalez Hoi isn't here, I'd like to start with the website review and updates first. And then we can come back into the board policy because I think that's pretty important. So we'll, we'll start with that because that's the, that's the easier item. And then bounce back. Oops. And then after that, I guess we can move to one C, which is going to be public comment.
So I'll take a look and see if any hands want to go up. There we do have folks in the audience. So ah, there we go. We have one hand so far. Anyone else? Great opportunity. Okay, I'm going to go to our first one. And if I get your last. So if I get your last name wrong, I apologize. Ryan Guznehey, you're first to speak. You may unmute.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Ryan Guznehey and I'm the seventh grade US history teacher at Invictus Academy of Richmond. I'm here to speak about my own experience in journey within Invictus specifically as a person of color. I would also like to say I'm here with my student Nikai Moore. She is my seventh grade student as well as advisor. When I first started working with Invictus, I knew I wanted to make an impact as a teacher of color. Being part of the Latinx community, specifically as a first generation Ecuadorian American, I knew many of my students shared my identity. Because of this, I wanted to use my identity and content area to expose my students, many of whom have never had history before, to a history that is representative to them and can encourage and affirm them as individual thinkers that have a voice and an opinion that matter as citizens of this nation. Invictus has supported me to lean into my POC identity to build relationship with my students. I have never, I have been given flexibility to teach an equity focused curriculum that integrates lessons that reflect the identity of my students and that makes relevant connections to their own lives today. Students are gaining and building on the knowledge of the people of color in our nation's history have left for us, especially during this racially focused time in our nation that our students are continuing to see and question as they are learning from home during this pandemic. The support and encouragement from Invictus leadership and staff in my vision for my class has helped me make an impact in a short time and even during a pandemic. For this reason, I am very proud to say that I have decided to remain in the classroom longer than anticipated to work, to continue the work and impact I am making in the community I serve and love. Charter schools like Invictus work because they provide robust support for their teachers, provide flexibility to implement relevant equity focused curricula, and honor student diversity and staff alike. I am very proud of the distance learning program and in our learning hub, and invite you to come and see firsthand the incredible work we are doing at Invictus to serve the students and families of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Nikai Moore. You may unmute. However, I am noticing that your version of Zoom will not allow you to do that. So I'm going to switch. If you have a phone, you can call in Nikai and we'll certainly bring you back up. I have the next one is N Ramirez. You may unmute.
Good evening, board members. I just wanted to suggest that in the spirit of transparency and equality that the other meetings that have been held also be posted. I learned about this meeting today. I was looking forward to it last week. I realized it was canceled because school was opening. And I reviewed the meeting that happened in January. I'm going to say my public comment for that later, but I would like for the meeting that was also held on March 15th to please be posted, video or audio or any Spanish translation that you have available. Thank you.
Thank you. I see that trustee Gonzalez Hoi has just arrived, so I just promoted him up.
Thank you, Dr. World. I apologize to you and trustee Reckler for, and the community for being late. Worked, work was a lot tougher today than expected. But thank you so much for, for starting without me and I apologize for interrupting. So go ahead.
No, we're just on public comment and we're no one else that other individual has not come in yet. Oh, they were looking for the number to call in. Let me see if I can find that while we're.
So trustee Gonzalez, I had to catch you up. We're in the middle of possibly finishing public comment. We had someone who couldn't call in because they had an older version of Zoom. And I did reverse the agenda though, to do the website first to wait for you to do the policy.
Wonderful, thank you so much. That makes sense.
And I'm looking to see if there is a phone call in number normally that's on the agenda, but because these committees have a different link, give me a moment to see if we've posted that. I apologize. And no, we don't. So homework to address is where's our call in number? So I would recommend that while I go and do some technical follow ups and see if we can figure that out and I'll put it back in the chat. Let's go ahead and bring up the first website if we could, Denise.
It's a good idea. Dr. World, if we can somehow figure that out and allow the member of the community to, to speak later, I'd be fine with that if trustee Reckler's. Okay, yeah.
I am working on trying to find out what that setting is because these are set up in a different way.
No problem. And Dr. World, are we getting a? If this already happened, please let me know. But are we getting a frame around this conversation? Or would you like me to do the framing?
Um, I'll open it up and then we definitely want your guidance. So part of what we're hoping to do as we really build the communication is making sure that our website has the necessary and relevant information that the public would want to be able to see and that will allow our stakeholders to ensure the appropriate accountability for each of the schools. So to do that, we thought one of the best ways would be to look at some of the other districts that have put things together and take a look at the elements that might be something we want to mirror and elements that we might want to take their concept, but make it better for ourselves. And then I'll pass back to you.
Thank you, yeah. No, I appreciate that, Dr. World. And for this, for this item, what I was thinking trustee Reckler, tell me again, please give me feedback on this. I was thinking we could just have a conversation and then open it up for feedback from the community because it'll be kind of hard to ask questions and then make comments. So maybe for this section, we can just have a conversation with Dr. World and Mr. Felley just about kind of what we hope to see in our own website. I asked them to agenda is both the Oakland and Santa Clara just because are there? I think there are two of the best ones in the state and they could serve maybe as examples of things that we could pull. And maybe, maybe Mr. Felley, if she doesn't mind, can walk us through both. And we can just talk about what we, what sections we like the most that we would like to see established now and things that we would like long term because we, of course, you know, want to put most of our time into the policies, but maybe some things that we can develop over time. What do you think trustee Reckler?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. That's, that's perfect. Yeah.
And as we have the conversation for the, for the public, if you could think of ideas or what you like or don't like and give us feedback when we come to public comment on this item, that'll be also very, very helpful. And I'll pass it back to you, Dr. World.
So I'm gonna let Denise Sefeli, our charter school coordinator, sort of drive us a little bit here into some of the different elements. So we're right now at the initial landing page there for charters. And you can see that there are several options within there. For staff, they have basically an internet piece. They have some COVID updates. They have students and family updates. And then they kind of describe the scope of what the district does as they go forward there. And then they have a flow chart of some of the roles. As you can see there, what does the authorizer do? What do the schools do? They then talk about their role, allowing you to download it. You can see there's translations. So where we would probably want to go first is take a look at what would happen if you click download. And then I know that someone in the chat had asked, will community members be able to speak? The answer is yes. When we're done with our discussion, there will be public comment for community members to be able to provide some input to.
So do you want me to start with the authorizer?
Yeah, let's start with the authorizer because that's really our role there and what we might be able to put up. And so that's just giving you, in that case, it's just the document there. So if we go back up, I believe when we looked at it, you can kind of look at their students and family. So why don't we start with students and family? Because ultimately, this is about the community face. Denise, I'll let you drive for just a second.
Okay, do you want me just to click on some of these so you can see what's behind their icons? Would that be helpful? Let me know if that's something you want to stay on or move on to the next.
Yeah, I mean, I think, Dr. Reckler.
I like that.
Trustee, Dr. Reckler.
Couldn't get there.
If you want to hear in parts, please just speak up. I was thinking, Mr. Felley, areas that you think are.
Really, for, really for me, my first, my, my first thought, you know, when I looked at our website and when I looked at these websites is, you know, really from a customer service problem solving point of view. So for every school that's in our fold, whether we're the authorizer or the county is the authorizer or the state is the authorizer, basic information, name, address, phone number, and then how you problem solve. So, you know, this is the address for the school. This is the principal or the headmaster. And this is how you would, you would get help. If that doesn't work for you, this is the next step that you would take. And so that you would list out a series of contacts so that people would, in a customer service fashion, be able to get assistance. And then having a real contact from us for our schools within our, our fold, you know, I felt was very important when I went to our website. I didn't see that. Something that I did see on our website though, is that we do seem to have a process. It's very old. My recommendation is that it gets updated immediately. So there is some direction of like, if you need help, this is the, these are the steps that you follow. First, you go back to your school, you speak to your head of school, and then it kind of walks you through. And so I think that, that needs to be updated immediately. I also think it needs to be in Spanish. And for the life of me, I've never been able to figure out exactly how the search function works on the WCC USD website. Anyway.
You're not alone.
Yeah. You know.
Bigger study, that's a bigger conversation on what platform we want to use there.
And Leslie, you have a lot on your list. And I understand that, but I think we need to talk about some of your things as you go along. Because right now you're just providing a laundry list. Do you, can we do that a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, so I want to go back to your first thoughts on process. How, how to talk to principals, how to contact the schools, the charter schools. So tell me what you envision as a parent. You have an issue. What do you need to go, kind of walk me through those steps?
So it seems like it might be okay. It just needs to be brought to being current.
Well. Are, are these current students that you're talking about of the districts? Or are these charter school students that you're talking about?
It would be if somebody comes to us and has an issue.
Our student or a charter student?
It would probably be a student that's involved in the charter school.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
Probably parent related.
Okay. So you want a complaint process, which we have some, but it's not complete.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, just to add to that for a second, Mr. Felley, since we're on the complaint piece, I do like how easily accessible it is on the Oakland website. I had a hard time finding it on ours, but like a parent complaint link from, from a family member in a charter. I do think that that would be super helpful with contact information for both your office and, you know, like they have there, right? A county office or state office, right? I think that would be, that would be great. And that actually I think is probably one of the best things from this, from this website, how they did it. Maybe a link, I believe there's a link below in a graphic, yeah. I think those are the things that I liked about the Oakland one the most.
And I wasn't even thinking about it. I mean, on our website, it does say complaint procedure, but I was just, I mean, it could even just say get help if someone just needs to get help.
Yeah, ours is a little out of date. It does have, um, an older link and then it has a county contact.
Right, so neither of these people exist anymore.
Right.
Correct.
And so, you know, have this, have this be updated and also in Spanish.
Yeah, and technically, if, if you click the translate button, the whole website does switch right over.
Accurately or?
That would be a different statement I'll have to talk to communications about. But the, it is the Google Translate tool to allow things. So we could indeed, for some of the static stuff, have it translated as well.
Okay, so I think that's, I think that would be very helpful that it's accurately done.
Okay.
And then, you know, a directory for sure. If you're looking for contact information.
Now, is that something that you want us to recreate for each of our charter schools? Or is this something that you would like a link to their charter website?
I think this is pretty much accurate. It just needs to get looked at. It's already up on our site. It just needs to.
Right, right. But I'm wondering, do you want, do you want to keep that look? Or would you rather have links to the websites? Or?
There are links to the websites.
Enrolled.
There, there are links to the, the website here. I mean, my thinking is a way to maintain it with being, having it be the most accurate. So if linking to their website is the most accurate, maybe, maybe that's the best way to go.
I'm thinking it might be more accurate than by the time we receive the information that there's a change and get ours updated, but I can go either way.
Yeah, I would be fine with that. And the only thing I would add to that though, is who the authorizer is. So after, after you've followed the procedure, you know, if you've, if you're not able to solve your issue at your site level, then this is where you go next.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, but the, the websites, yeah, the websites all seem to be attached here. So it doesn't, doesn't feel like a ton of work to clean it up. But I've been inside the software, so saying that and doing it, well, they might be.
Well, trust me, I'll be eliciting the assistance of our communications department.
So this was Oakland's piece. Is there anything else on Oakland before we kind of back out of this and go to the other?
Yeah, Dr. World, they had a couple of things. So the digging deeper on charter school data, I, I really like that. I know we have it on our, on our website, but I wanted to kind of like pull that from, on our website to be at the forefront of the dashboard, dashboard. I don't know if that's the right word, but like the main page. Because you have to go into one of the links in order to then go into the data, which there's nothing there so right now, since the data has been updated. So I would want it to, for that part, I wanted to look more like the Santa Clara website, but I do like how easily accessible it is on the Oakland website for families and community to look at that data. So it would just be putting it on the main part of our website that I would like to see that.
Okay. Did you like the information that was behind it?
From the Oakland one?
Uh huh.
Or? Not so much. Actually, yeah, when we go to the Santa Clara, I, yeah, I actually like the way that it's framed in Santa Clara one. And I'm not sure if trustee Reckler agrees on that one. I, I just felt like it was a little bit, well, not just more robust, but maybe easier to read on the Santa Clara one. Just the Reckler, I don't know if you saw that as well.
So I'd like, when we get to the Santa Clara one, a long, long time ago, you sent me something. This is like way back in the Stone Age. I've never been able to re-find it, but I think we are talking about the same thing. And I think it was Santa Clara, but I really don't have a good recollection. So there was something that was quite robust and had great graphics. So let's see if we, if we can locate that.
Should we move on to that one then?
Actually, if you wouldn't mind going back real quick. Thank you. So I also like the learn your rights and rules, the charter must follow. I like that at the bottom. Okay, maybe backtrack. I like all of this, except I would probably, I would not put the learn how to enroll in a charter school on the main page. I would put that within the learn more about charter schools in general, like we have it already on our website. And I would also take off the starting a charter school from our website and I would embed that into that folder as well, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Okay, okay, wonderful. Sorry, sometimes I'm not the best explainer, so please tell me if I'm not, so I can explain again, but.
And that's why we wanted this item on the agenda because we think the more we talk through it and really get feedback, the better we can create a visual that everyone will be able to go to.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm okay moving on if trustee Recklers as well.
Yep, that's, yep.
And for the audience, I did paste in a number in the chat for those that need to call in.
Thank you, Dr. World. So for this one, um, like trustee Reckler said, I really liked their data. Now, let's see if we can find it, their page with the data. It was just sent to me by one of the members of the community who's watching. So we can probably find it as well in there. It might be a link.
It's gonna be on the top left. I believe when I went through here, it's under the resources. So here you've got, when you go into the department, you've got.
I'm back.
Yeah, so I think here you've got all the individuals and you can see quite a few folks in Santa Clara County going through it. If you go down a little bit lower on the links, this is where you've got your data books. And I think that's probably what you're talking about there. So if you'll go to, let's look at the 2020 data book. And so what I believe this is, this is an internal document that they are creating and they've created their template. I will tell you that we are just on the baby steps of doing something like this for our own budget that I haven't even shown trustee Reckler the template yet, but it's coming there, so.
Right, well, I authorized that position, so I'm expecting like pretty pictures.
Yeah, we're, we're not there yet, but it's coming. But so, yeah, here's, the idea is if you like the elements in here, what we would have to start doing is creating those templates. And then this would become a document that is created. County offices tend to be able to create these a little easier than school districts because if you go back to the roster of their staff, there's a much larger oversight staff. Whereas here it is Denise, Tony and Veronica. And when we're sitting over at the budget committee, it'll be Tony and Veronica. And when we get to the safety committee, it'll be Tony and Veronica.
Yeah, yeah. This is, uh, this is, I think, part of the long-term vision for the website, of course. And I think that I wouldn't expect a hundred page document with their way, maybe it's created this way. But if we can take pieces of this and just put it into a dashboard that'll make it easier so that we can request of the charter schools, everything we expect them to send us. And it's not as much of a lift to put it into, into a document and just put it together into the dashboard. Maybe that would be an easier lift because I totally understand this would be quite a bit of work for one person, right?
Denise, can you press the plus sign or 100% make it up to 150 for the audience? Just to see some of the elements. So what you're seeing here is their Sback scores.
Yeah, I have to say, I don't remember this, but I remember school, but like a page that was school by school with visual, maybe if we dig down further into this document here. I mean, this is beautiful. I just don't remember this.
This is all the dashboard data. So this is basically an extract of the state's Sback data dashboard. They're all into tabular form because you can see how many different charter schools there are. So if you keep scrolling down, you can see each of the elements that show up on the charter dashboard.
Yeah, yeah, I don't remember this. This would take forever.
And like I said, if we were to go to the state website. And, and like I said, if we were to go to the state website, you would see all of these different elements. It's kind of like, um, eddata.k12.us has a lot of those pieces. This might be what you were.
This is what I remember. Okay, so this is it. So this is what I remember. So there were, um, that's right. I remember these pages with these, um, graphics.
So this is easier for us to create a template and doing a single-page infographic.
Yeah, I don't know, trustee Reckler, I think I'd be okay until we can maybe, uh, give, uh, Mr. Felli a couple of, uh, support staff. Um, I would, I would be okay if, you know, for the next year or two, we, we only see these for now. And then if, I mean, if we need more data, I'm sure that, you know, we'll get larger packages from the charters. But, but to put on the website, I think that this is kind of what I was looking for. Um, and, and easy to read thing for community and for, where, where, you know, a, a, a regular parent or community member can go and doesn't have to scroll through a hundred pages, right, but can really find information and data around their school or another school in, in the district. Um. Trusty Reckler, what do you, what do you think, Dr. Wong and Miss Felli?
Yeah, so this is what I remember and this is what I liked. Um, and I thought that this, this would be, um, ease, um, easy to view and absorb information from.
So let's, let's stop Denise, go just a little bit, because I want to go through the elements there to make sure that these are indeed the things that you're looking at. So if you look on the fast facts, it talks about how they became a charter, how they ultimately got to the county. So in this case, they weren't direct to county, they came through an appeal, when it was authorized, when it was opened, how, when they're up for renewal and what their current term is. So I'm assuming that that is information you would want. There, then you go to the right side, they've got some of the staffing costs for the public, the CMO rate means charter management organization rate. So that's the percentage that that seat charter management organization is taking from this school. And that's a dollar amount is enlisted next. The facility fee is exactly what you think it is. Um, charter schools, sometimes they do Prop 39, which is the ability to request facilities from the authorizing organization, i.e. us. They do have to pay a fair share rent for that. Other times, they may pay a private landowner for the same thing, and so that's how much they're paying for facilities, what the status of that is. STIRS is state teachers retirement, and I know that trustees know that. I'm just saying for the public there, whether or not the teachers participate in that retirement and whether or not the classified staff participate in public employee um, retirement system, which is PERS. In this case, neither do. Are there any other, uh, post-employment benefits? In this case, they do a 403B there, and then the teacher attrition rate, meaning how many teachers return one year over the next year.
So my question would be, who do you want this to be geared toward as far as your audience?
Mm-hmm.
When they look at this, so is this really the type of information you feel is pertinent to parents or, you know, to people who are going to be utilizing this website?
Yeah.
Or, uh, or should we see other elements?
So for the top part, I think that's for a more sophisticated user, but if you scroll up a little bit more.
Up the other way.
We're down, sorry.
Yeah.
The other way, yeah, there we go. So that, this is helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So those are your straight student population. Um, again, I'm just going to summarize for those that can't see the graphic. You've got the percentage of English learners, percentage of students with IEPs, that's your special needs students that, um, you have your free and reduced lunch, so those are economically disadvantaged students, percentage of students from local districts, and this is a county they're talking about all. For our purposes, it would be percent that live within our boundaries. And then the annual attrition rate for students, that's what percentage of students do not stay with that charter. And then you've got kind of small, but you've got their class sizes. This happens to be a TK through grade eight school, and interestingly enough, their class size is higher in TK and K than it is in grades four through eight.
That is interesting.
I, I don't think I've ever seen that before. Plus, I don't know what happened to grades one through three in this school, because they're not on this chart.
Um, you know, to, to answer Ms. Fell's question, I think that I want, I, I, I would like to see exactly this, right? Where like, part of it might be for, you know, uh, uh, community members who want to hold charts kind of, right? A part of it can be for parents who are just interested in data for, for their school, right? Or wherever it is, I think that this sheet really encompasses like a lot of the community that I'm thinking about, uh, including, you know, families in the, in the charter school, right? Uh, if they want to look at data of their own, of their own school. Um, I wonder if to, to decrease the lift, you know, every year we have to ask for this data from the charter schools. I wonder if we could reach out to Santa Clara and ask if they would be willing to share their template with us so that we could provide this template to the charter schools directly, um, to input, right? Um, and, and provide to us on a yearly basis, uh, with the, with the, um, data they have to provide us anyway, where it's going to be a little more challenging, it's going to be, uh, probably the charter schools that, um, we don't have direct oversight over, right? But maybe we can work with county office on that piece. Um, uh, but do you, Mr. Fell, do you feel like that would be easier, that would be better? Um, both for, uh, oversight as well as for, um, timeliness?
I can easily reach out to them and see what they are, you know, willing to provide. I'm sure that they will be very happy to share. I can't imagine they wouldn't be, um, you know, but going back to the top, the financial data, you know, I'd rather see the student enrollment piece be a lot more robust, because people are always interested in, you know, suspension rates and things of that nature. And I don't see those on these charts, but it's something we as a district are always talking about. You know, so I can see.
This is also a year in arrears. This data book is the 2020 book, and it really was probably published in the 2020, 21, the school year. So it's likely pulling without even talking to Santa Clara, but I've, I've had some history with these types of books the county offices put out. It's taking the certified data from the previous year that drops into CalPads and other pieces and dropping it into these templates. Um, there, actually, I don't even know where the CMO information is, so that would be a slightly different data recovery tool, but the teacher salary is all state data that gets certified at the end of the year.
I mean, the other thing that I do like about this is that these are things exactly as you were saying, that come from CalPads that you don't normally see. So that's what makes it of interest to me, and perhaps the other way of doing it is suspension data is available from the California schools dashboard. So perhaps there could be a link to the dashboard where those types of things are available and you can find them. But some of these, you know, you really need to know, you know, how to mine to get some of this. So maybe that's another way. You know, to, to give a little shortcut that might, um, you know, save some time, but still be accurate.
Well, I will remind the trustees tomorrow night, there is a contract renewal on the contracts for renewal, and that is our creation of our linking to CalPads and to, um, SACE and to CTC, the California Teacher Prudentialing. We're actually creating direct links to data mine back information. So what I think I'm hearing from the trustees is you might want us to create a couple additional links with that contract to be able to pull certain data back right into this template.
Wow, can't believe we put it together so well for you. Uh.
So tomorrow night.
He left the trail of breadcrumbs.
Yeah, so tomorrow night, on, there's a specific contract, the three letters would be Y E S for that renewal, because I can say without a doubt that if it's available on the site, we can actually mine it back with that work that we're doing. And we could probably fill the templates with the data element you're wanting and have something that would be even more robust than what you're seeing here. Because we're already going down that pathway internally.
That's great.
Yeah, so that's a nice, yeah.
Yeah, no, sorry. Go ahead, uh, go ahead, trustee Reckler.
Yeah, that's just the nice thing about this, is that it's things that you normally don't see, so.
Scroll down a little, Denise, is that another school or is there a second page?
It is. No, it's.
Okay, so just one page per school. Great, straight infographic. Okay, so then, I think we understand the kind of elements. Um, what I would recommend is I would like to actually talk with that person, the, the programmer, about what we could mine and be able to pull in sooner rather than later and what that timeline might look like, so I can report back to you.
And what it costs.
Well, it, it would be embedded in the contract.
Oh, it'd be in the contract.
Yeah, so the contract that you're renewing, this would just be part of the work that they're doing within that scope. No extra cost to the district beyond what we're already paying. That's why it's a very nice contract.
And then don't forget, there is the California schools dashboard, so, you know.
Yeah, we would link right to it.
Yeah, link right to it, so.
And I believe you can do extracts from there. So you are able to do data downloads. Once we do that, we can then literally have that data populate these info.
You can do that. It's not, you need a programmer. It's not something that a normal person could do, correct?
But that's what I'm saying. The person, the contract that we have would be able to do that work.
Okay.
Now that I know the ask of the community and the trustees, I know how to scope that work for you.
Okay, yeah, I don't think that's something we can do, because I've tried, so.
No, no, that, 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 yeah. That's why we have the contract.
So, so if that's the recommendation going forward, which, uh, I believe it will be, um, uh, when could we maybe revisit this to kind of look at what this person could support us with as well as, uh, maybe when Mr. Felli finds out from Santa Clara, like, are we talking about maybe going back sometime September, October, uh, or earlier?
Bring it back. I won't say the next charter meeting, but possibly the one after that. We'll have an update on what we can do.
Wonderful.
And then if you just wanted some specifics from me about how these pages should lay out, um, just for really the contact information, I'd be happy to send that in.
That'd be great.
I would like to see that.
Okay.
Okay. Um, all right, so I want us to move forward so we can have a time with policy, because we have a hard stop today at six fifty.
Yeah, I have to go.
Um, so, so why don't we open it up for public comment on, on the item that we are just discussing, that we just finished discussing? And then we will move to the next piece. Thank you, Dr. Wong and Mr. Felli for that. Um, so folks in the public, if you have feedback on, um, the website or the data dashboard, uh, please raise your hand now, and you'll be able to speak.
I'm watching. And I am not seeing any hands, because this is such excellent information. Everyone is just excited and ready for us to bring it forward. Oh, wait.
Thank you.
You know what happened? Uh, first public comment, and Veronica, if you'll put the clock up, is going to be Sarah. We, you may unmute, Sarah.
Hi there. Um, I'm very glad to hear that, um, this committee is considering sharing additional information about charter schools with the community. Um, one thing I, that really resonated with me was when, um, somebody mentioned about, you know, who is this audience for? And I think that keeping parent perspective at the forefront is going to be really important. And we know, uh, that parents are really interested in things like how to enroll in a charter school and, um, student demographic information and things of that nature. So I do believe that, um, putting that for, uh, at the forefront of the school guide would be great. Um, and additionally, I think in the service of just sharing information and transparency with the community, I think that this is also a great opportunity for the district to share information about the district schools as well. And so I hope that this committee, um, or potentially another one, would consider sharing the same information about charter schools, uh, as they would the district schools and publicizing that wise widely as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next public speaker is N. Ramirez. You may unmute.
Hi, I think the teacher and student attrition rates data should be provided for both the district and the charter schools if it's going to be displayed on this website. Due to the high levels of gentrification that the Richmond and San Pablo communities have been experiencing in the past decade, I need you to be aware that housing costs have soared, which may be contributors to both student and teacher attrition rates. So this needs to be taken into mind, and this can happen in both charter and district schools. District schools, however, might have an advantage, because the teachers in some of these district schools and families who have benefited from things like generational wealth or have been privileged enough to secure housing in the San Pablo, Richmond area, or even the most affluent zip codes, because remember, within our district, there's affluent zip codes and less affluent zip codes. Um, they don't seem to have this problem, and therefore they won't be reflected as part of this attrition data. So I think that if you want to view this through the lens of equity, this data, uh, has a potential of being misleading. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes public comment, trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Wong, and thank you to the two individuals that made public comment. Um, so why don't we move forward to the next item, uh, or the beginning item, um, and go back to our policy? I believe that we only have one for today, which is pretty lengthy. They're all pretty lengthy, but, um, uh, I'll pass it back to you, uh, Dr. Wong.
So we have two versions. We have a redlined version where some potential changes are illustrated. And then so that you can actually read it clean, we had the clean version. And we don't have trust, we don't have attorney scholar, but we have, uh, Jessica with us, who actually probably does most of the work anyways, so we're actually better off. You know, it's kind of like when you, you have me or you have Denise.
That is so unfair. He gets all the credit. We're going to call him out next time he's here.
So Jessica's here to answer any all questions that you might have. I might recommend that we bring up the redline, just be, it'll be a little sloppier, but at least it'll show you some of the areas that, as we looked at best practices, we started to make some potential recommendations. And Denise, if you'll try to make it, um, for one, one more, yeah, there we go. So the first thing is that you'll see that all of these notes are, when you go to the CSBA website, they put notes that are kind of directional in there. And if you're not paying attention and you're just copying and pasting, they end up getting embedded into policies that they never should have been there. There, because it's really supposed to start where it begins at the governing board. And so we just got rid of the word governing there without any change. So if you keep going, again, we're getting rid of all of the notes that it should, really shouldn't have been there. There's not a lot of change. Here's the first real addition. Very simple, just saying you need to follow the law and the guidance of the Board of Education, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you go up just a little bit, just for a minute?
Previous page?
So you can leave it right there. So the first question I had was, um, the elimination of governing, was there a reason for that? It's just a question.
It's just the semantics. We rarely use that. We rarely use the word governing board when we describe ourselves. Yeah, we've always just said the board.
Okay. Okay, oh, and I'd just like to say that I found this version to be actually quite helpful, um, just to see the changes. And, okay, so you can keep going. Then I think I had a question on this page too.
On this one?
Yeah, let me just see if I can.
So yeah, the first change is not really a change, it's just adding that, um, savings clause, basically.
Okay, right. Okay, so this was all fine, right? So you took out all the timelines. So these new timelines, this all reflects the new, all new.
Eighteen fifteen oh five.
Okay. Uh. See, business day, okay. Okay, so we have the public hearing.
Yep, so none of that changed. There, it's business day.
Okay, so here is the question, I'm sorry, before you get off this page. So can you talk about the certi, if applicable, the certification from the county superintendent's schools? When, what, tell me about that process, about what would happen? So it was, it would be as if our body, our staff didn't feel that was, there was questions, they would, they would kick it up to county, or how does that?
When we're dealing with the possibility of denying a charter due to fiscal impact, there are specific criteria that have to be met, and that this approval would move the district to certainty of a negative certification. For a negative certification to be valid, the county superintendent, i.e. designee, would have to validate that. So should a charter petition come forward or a material revision of a current charter? And it be one that we, and I guess technically me and my current role, believe would take us to, towards a negative certification? I would need to provide that documentation to the county, and the county would need to validate that. That's really what the law is talking about here.
Okay, thank you for that.
And Jessica's gonna correct me every time I step incorrectly because we all know who does the real work. And so now we're getting into 2019's AB 1505 changes. And so this is the language of the criteria there.
Dr. World, sorry to interrupt you, but is this the same language that we saw in the previous policy that we reviewed a month ago? I was trying to compare it, and it looked pretty much the same, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to confirm it was the same, okay.
Yeah, I don't think we made a ton of substantive changes as we went through. So this just talks about, you are also required to look at the academic needs of the students. There, I don't think there's anything that you haven't seen before, so if we go to the next page. Here's where some of the changes there come out. Because financial comes in a different place. It's really a focus here, when you're talking about the academic of how are they gonna address low achieving students? How are they gonna address students of special needs being the key? Indicators there. And so you have all this community interest pieces and the potential liabilities that comes into the community interest analysis. So now this is a different lens, looking at, back to the original charter law. If you remember, when Gary Hart first started this whole thing way back, it was, we're gonna have 100 schools, they're gonna be pilot schools, we're gonna learn from them, and they're gonna make public education better, because they're gonna do something different than we've done and find a way that we can replicate it. So the community interest is that, is it going to provide something that the community does not have?
Right.
Which is the whole concept of what charters were for. So here you go into, have they engaged with the community? Have they, if they intend to expand for the material revision, how are they going to make that work? What's the connection?
Dr. World, sorry, you could stop there real quick. Since we're thinking of all this facilities piece, pieces, is it, is it somewhere else, facilities questions?
Yeah, I believe it comes up a little farther down.
Okay, I may have missed it.
Because a lot of it, so a lot of the facilities, some of it is in the community interest as it pertains to location. And then some of it kind of comes into the financial. There, so it gets embedded in a couple different areas. Because they're not, charters don't have to comply with the field act, they have a lot easier pathway to finding locations. You know, I keep thinking that somebody should just take over Sears and live in there at this point. All right, so here now we talk about, we're back to the community, again, we're still focused on the community, the petitioners there. Have they gotten their interest? Then we flip back to academic here. So first we talked about populations and we're into the academic indicators. And the dashboard becomes very critical when you're looking at renewals. As you know, in the renewal criteria, the dashboard is the guiding light. For new petitions, you'd be looking at how they're going to ensure that they hit the indicators on the dashboard. And then their comparisons to our community. Looking at each of the subgroups. Focusing on what they're offering that the district or neighboring schools are not. So it might not just be a comparison against our district, but since there are multiple charters within our boundaries, any charter that's coming forward would need to be able to show how they distinguish themselves from other charters as much as how they're distinguishing themselves from the district. Because again, you go back to the main tenants of charter law was that there's another way to be able to do something. And if a charter school is getting only the same results as a public school, that wasn't the intent of the law. There was to create another option to really move forward students. Here we talk about matriculation rate, are there attrition, so those attrition statistics you saw on that one page, that plays right in here to that last bullet there. Okay, so now you're into the approval of the petition, this has to do more with new versus renewals. Back to the academic needs, making sure that they're met, that was already in our policy, if you'll keep going. And so this is something that we talked about previously with this committee. So that last part in red, I'll let you just kind of read it for a second. So this was sort of the change in direction that this committee had kind of asked that our charters have that accountability measure to provide a report annually. And so that's, that's where that was the genesis.
Can we go back to that red just for a minute?
Yes.
I think I just found one small typo in this. To assist the board in its general oversight responsibilities, each school's charter shall provide four reports to the board or just reports to the board? What is the?
Oh, yeah. Shall provide four reports to the board at least annually. Yeah, that probably doesn't work right.
Yeah, it's just probably reports.
Well, we'll assume that that was the sentence that attorney Scolar did.
Yeah.
Now Jessica, you can tell him I did this since he wasn't here.
Man, you know, he lives by me, I'm gonna see him, I'm gonna tell him that you roasted him.
Yeah, it's all right, he'll get me back.
Well, technically, I think that it's saying that the charter has to provide for, like a requirement for reports to be made to the board, but maybe I'm reading it wrong.
No, I think that is the intent of the language, is that the charter does need to provide for the board there, so. That is.
No, I mean that it's the charter, like the actual charter document, rather than the school. So it's, it's a requirement for a provision in the charter.
Ah. So we went.
Does that make sense, though?
Yes.
Basically.
Each school's charter shall provide four reports to the board at least annually?
Maybe it's legal speak, so, you wouldn't normally speak that way.
Well, why don't we confirm with Mr. Scolar, just to make sure, because I'm an English language learner and I really don't understand that either. So maybe it is lawyer lingo, but why don't we confirm that?
Is your intent to have it say that, you know, the charter staff should, should prevent, should present to the board at least annually? And do you want it to say that the charter has to say so, or does that matter?
Yeah, that's the big question. Do you want it embedded in the actual document of the charter? And, or do you just want it a requirement in our policy that they present?
This came from our old policy, from your district's old policy.
So what's better, what holds, what holds higher oversight?
Hold more weight. It would hold more weight if they wrote it in their charter.
Yep, that which gets measured gets done. So we might want.
Because that's something we can, yeah, we can hold them to that.
Yeah, so just keep a note, Denise, that we want to make a little tweet there.
Okay.
Yeah, I just think that needs to get cleaned up a little bit, and I do remember that from the previous version. That they are supposed to be providing reports annually.
And do we have to specify that we want written and possibly verbal reports? Or is this just encompass whatever type of report we require?
My recollection is that it was supposed to be written, but I'd have to go back and check.
Yeah, that's usually, the provision of an oral report is sort of squishy. In a sense, you usually create a template and an expectation of what needs to be provided in writing. That's what you tend to want to codify.
Got it.
So then we got the notes are gone here, all of this language here at the bottom is still the old same oversight language. And now you're getting into your cross references, which technically we don't need to keep there, but that's fine. So now we go into the denial, and there was.
Dr. World, sorry, can I pause for a second? Sorry. Facilities, I still didn't see anything, obviously.
I don't either.
Yeah, we don't have to require, I guess, that they provide us with. Well, I thought we, they did have to provide us with intent for facilities somewhere under the law, no?
Well, there, there's a whole other regulation under the Prop 39 rules, and the timelines that they're making their requests, so that's a different policy.
So not part of their, not part of their petition?
Well, no, it is. It's one of the elements, because they have to define how they're gonna house students, and that has to be material within their budget analysis, that they have sufficient resources, whether it be through the Prop 39 and paying their fair share, or whether it be through acquisition and or lease of facilities.
Got it, okay, so.
There's part of the financials.
Through that policy, we're gonna get that anyway, so we don't need to, here, okay.
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
All right, so here we're going into the denials. You can see all the old ed code. Basically, the notes are crossed out, we're focused on AB 1505, keep on going to where we can get to the changes. This talks about the fact that when we do choose to do a denial, we do have to do a statement of facts. And so here, the language changed on unsound educational program there, and it just, you just make it simple. Trying to remember what we did on four there. It's kind of weird how it's a negative affirmative affirmation instead of a positive affirmation. I don't know why that gets written that way, it always confuses me, but.
No, that was definitely written by a lawyer. I'll give you that one.
Yeah.
We have one here so we can ask.
Yeah.
Sometimes we have to finesse the best we can with the statutory language we're given.
Makes sense.
So it does not contain an affirmation of each of the conditions. So basically, you're not doing the stuff that you're, that is discussed in ed code 47605.
Right, that can be a basis for denial.
Yeah. Okay, scrolling down a little bit more, so now when we get to the analysis of the finding, the fiscal impact comes down later there, because now it's a different criteria. And Jessica, do you remember, can you go back up a little bit? Because we crossed out one thing the other way. Right there, no, down a little bit, I'm sorry. Down a little farther. Right there, B, we crossed out on duplicate a program. And I'm not sure, I think I remember why, but it's more of a question for Jessica. Is that no longer a criteria for denial that's a duplicative program?
I think that we just replaced this with, you know, more accurate current language. Is further detailed below. I'm looking at the clean version now, so what does it say?
Okay, so the finding gets done lower, okay, so.
Yeah.
All we're saying is, analysis of this finding is.
It practically, Dr. World and Ms., I apologize, Ms. O'Salp, I hope I said your last name right?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful. It's on page 11, if you look at.
That's right.
The third bullet point of the second paragraph, it's, it was practically moved there.
All right, I just wanted to make sure, because I, I remembered, but I forgot. All right, keep going, Denise. And so we say it again here, now you get into the denial reasons right there, community interest describes why. Undermining services, duplicating a program comes there. Then you have that, the enrollment issues, the under-enrolling issues, how it would impact revenues. Keep on going. Disproportionate impacts. The highest need student populations all become part of the criteria here. And then when you're dealing with duplicative, there's your three bullets there that you get to talk about. And then community interest, you can see there's quite a bit as it pertains to community interest. Significant amount of it on enrollment switches, but then you've got revenue in there, you've got staffing impacts. You've got disproportionate impact again for specific subpopulations. Does it in effect create a tracking system where a certain group of students is now removed from the student population, creating a mono ethnic or mono demographic situation where those students benefited from being more diverse previously, that can be a significant impact. There, as we go, keep on going. And then there's all of the different pieces there that we have to satisfy at least one of the conditions to be able to get to denial. Then you go into the appeal. How they have to go to the county. There's then a component here on special needs and how they are going to ensure that the needs of students are met in special education. And whether or not they are going to be doing the special ed services, what self are they gonna be part of, how they're gonna get that done becomes very important. And then there's the categories of. Again, back to the self was where they're gonna go, and then all of the ever famous ed code references.
And Dr. World, did Ms. Hardy look at the sped, all the sped language as well? Was she able to take a look at all that?
I know we did consult with our specialized.
Wonderful.
So that is 11 pages of lots of different texts for your first review.
Thank you. Thank you so much to you and Ms. O'Salp and Ms. Zafeli, trustee Reckler. Any questions or comments before we open it up for the public?
Yeah, I, I'm really happy with this, I'm really happy with the way it came out. I really couldn't find anything, and even I just found that little thing about, you know, we just found that little piece about reports, but I, I mean, I think. piece about reports, but I, I mean, I think it, I think it came out really well. Very comprehensive and very updated. And if we actually get this done and approved this year, I think that's a, a major success. That's it.
Yeah, thank you. And I, you know, we should do our comments after, but I don't have any questions because I thought it was also so well done. And, um, I actually for, as part of my homework, I kind of did a comparison to the San Diego new policy. And, um, it was, uh, this, I felt like ours was even stronger and better written. So I was really impressed. And thank you to all of you. Uh, I mean, I'm really curious on, on getting maybe some community input on it, especially in the community parts. But, um, community input piece, um, a little redundant, but in community input piece of the, uh, denials and the approvals and all that. But, um, uh, maybe we can just put it back on the agenda for the next meeting, just so that we can get some input from the community. But otherwise I was really happy with it. Um, and I was pretty impressed. So Dr. Wold, I'm not sure if you have anything else that you'd like to add maybe before we open it up.
Just one more thing. Behind the scenes, we believe that the more we can be participative with the charter community as we're doing this, the better. So we're actually working and having some side meetings with the charter committee, um, oversight. So I know he's here and we've met with him a couple of times and we're actually getting other input as we're going forward. Because we, we think the more we're talking about, this isn't a gotcha process. This is truly about creating the right set of accountability, the right set of standards that everyone knows the playing field and the rules. So I, I just want to say that I'm really impressed with the cooperation and the ability to have an open conversation and not have it be us and them versus we're talking about charters. And so we still meet monthly with all of the charters, um, including the ones that we don't directly oversee. I have a monthly standing meeting and we're, we were at a hundred percent attendance. I think we've dipped to like 90% of all of the charters in our boundaries come every time. So it's been pretty productive. And we're hoping to continue that all the way through. So it's a different era for what we're trying to do in our accountability. Because ultimately we all have one common interest and that is to serve our students. So that's.
Thank, thank you. No, that is really well framed. And yeah, absolutely. You know, if our charter partners, uh, have input on these policies, I would love to hear it. So I'm sure trustee Reckler as well. Um, and you know, one thing that you made me think about as you were saying all that. Maybe we would also benefit on sharing our drafts with the county office just to kind of get their input as well. They might have some good feedback for us. So maybe that's something we can do in the next month before maybe we kind of finalize this, this specific policy. So that, uh, we can gather as much feedback as possible. Um, and I know they have a charter committee. So maybe our partners in the, in the county would be willing to take a look at it for us as well.
We'll reach out. And then I do have one question because we're doing several of these little policies.
Yeah.
Is our long-term goal to get them all done and bring a package to the full board for review? Or is it while we still remember what we just talked about to do each piece? Because there, there's pros and cons both ways. I just am interested in which way the committee would like to move.
That is a great question, Dr. Wold. Um, I originally was envisioning to bring all of it at once, a package. But if we do have questions and it's not just accepted and consent, right? I really don't know if we'll be able to answer all of them. Um, maybe, uh, well, I'm curious to hear the, uh, Dr. Reckler's input, uh, but.
Loving this.
On that, but maybe we can have a conversation with, uh, Superintendent Duffy and President Phillips and get their input on that. But I'm, I think I'm still leaning on a package just to make sure that like, because they're all connected, um, in many ways. So, um, yeah, I'm thinking aloud, but I think I would prefer, I just convinced myself, maybe I'd prefer as a package, but trustee Reckler, what do you think?
Yeah, I was thinking of a package as well. I mean, I was even thinking of a study session. This is all the work we did this year. Um, and this is the results. And then you can frame it and have the experts there. You know, you, you can lay it all out about how they all link together was kind of what I came to at the end of the last meeting. It is pretty dry and, you know, it's not a load of fun, but it also is a dedicated time. It's not interrupted. You can go through all of it. You have the people there to answer your questions. So maybe that's the way to go.
That gives me the guidance that I need because if we're going to try to create those one-page templates, that's going to take us some time. So I envisioned potentially putting them together at the same time. And it's kind of like, surprise, here's this and that. And it might tie it well. So thank you. It was more just for our piece. So now Denise and I know that we have to somewhere write down some notes so we don't forget what we said today.
Yeah, no, I have it and I'll, I'll send in a few things, but then I think it makes sense that, you know, this is everything we did this year. And here's the whole package and hopefully it makes sense to everybody.
Yeah, I think what we'll start doing, and this is more for Denise because I'm going to forget what I just said, but Veronica and Denise will write it down. We're going to write the pre-sees now, like right now, before we forget. So it's going to sit there for two or three months while we do the next one and we'll just keep adding to it. So our summary will already be there and we won't have to go, what did we say four months ago?
It's a good idea.
Okay, um, with that.
Why don't we open up for a public comment?
I'm going to look and see how many hands we got. Ah, there we go. Alright, our first, um, and Veronica is going to take over our little screen there with the clock. Our first public comment is Sarah Butler. You may unmute.
Hi, uh, Sarah Butler, and, um, I am on the county board and I'm really glad to see you reviewing these, this policy. And I just wanted to point out that it's great to try to do them all at once, but I'm, I'm, uh, thinking about, I thought you might have one or two charter schools up for renewal next year, which means they might be appealing to you in the fall. Which if you're doing them all at once, when are you going to be done? I don't know what that meant. Because I would think you would want to update your renewal policy before the next charter schools, you know, apply for renewal. That's all just something to keep in mind. But, uh, it sounds like you're having a great discussion and I don't have any other comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that, I see no more. So if we can put the agenda back up, there you, we can end the public comment.
Thank you, Dr. Wold, and thank you trustee Butler for that comment. You know, to answer, to answer that question, uh, just because I think it's, it's beneficial for all of us to kind of have a discussion. I think our goal would be to be done with our policy cleanup by early fall. And I believe, please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Felli, the next renewal is not till November or December, uh, by LPS and RCP? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, we should be receiving their, their renewal packages by December is what we would hope for.
And I'm going to recommend to them that we don't get into the bind that we were in last year where we are crossing over the Christmas holidays and all of that. Because of the appeal timelines, not that we're saying anyone being denied. I would strongly encourage if they're listening that they might want to get it in a little earlier than November. Cause the holidays get to be very ugly. People get grouchy during that period. So either come early or late.
But that also helps us with our timing too, about when we need to get done. So that, that's actually helpful.
Yeah. I mean, I would think if I'm a charter operator, I'd be coming in right after the first month of school so that I can get it done and know what's going on before Thanksgiving.
Yeah. I mean, I, I do, I do want to make sure that our policies are updated by the first one. So we're going to have to backwards plan to be done by then, I think, and have the discussion with the full board and hopefully pass it. So I think that, um, if we were to have kind of like our final drafts to push to give to the board president, superintendent by, you know, end of July, that should give us enough time to then schedule a special session to go over them. Um, is that a timeline that may that?
Jessica, how many do we have that we have to bring? I forgot.
We've, we've done them all in red line.
They're all available now, um, for review, but there's point four, one, point four, two, point four, three. The others are not as long as this one, but there is an administrative regulation attached to this one.
So there's.
So four total, it sounds like. So what I would recommend is at our next meeting, if we are able to bring, we'll bring the administrative regulation back with this one and the other three. That'll be our only agenda item. We won't put anything else on. That will then allow for that full first reading, any other summaries. So that gets us through the month of May. We don't have any, then we got either June or July, we might be able to hit um, a meeting in the, in August for the board where there's not a heavy agenda potentially. And it would fit in there, there or worst case, or the back half of September.
That, that sounds great. Yeah. I mean, I think that that would fit the timeline fine. And, um, since they're shorter and being the only items on the agenda for next, next time, I think that that makes total sense. Just you Reckler, you okay with that?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
I agree with that. Yeah.
Okay. And then that allows us after we finish those, then we can pivot back to the template for presentations because we'll have all the policies written.
Sounds great.
Okay, Denise, if you can scroll down to item three, so we can move on in the agenda and hit our hard stop well.
So we were already kind of hitting our number three. Um, so I'm glad we had that conversation. Trustee Reckler, anything for good of the order or future agenda items after the next one, um, that you would like to see?
The only thing I have for good of the order is that we may have some minutes that need to get reviewed and approved from prior meetings. I don't have any agenda items. We've just mapped out, I think, a excellent little schedule. And, you know, we just have, we have just a couple of little things that need to get cleaned up in this policy, but, but that's it. I'm, um, I think it's great.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. Um, I agree with everything you said. If, uh, Dr. Wold, if we could have the minutes from our previous meeting and today's meeting at the next one, then we can just approve them all at once. And, uh, yeah, I agree. Let's just move forward with the timeline. Let's get the policy done, which is our priority. And then the next items, we'll just start scheduling for the following meetings. Um, and I just want to apologize to plug. I wasn't here for the beginning, but, uh, I apologize for moving the last meeting. Both trustee Reckler and I are now volunteering in hubs. Um, so we got held up at the site helping. And we were not prepared for that meeting last minute. So, uh, I appreciate the, 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 the willingness to, to move today. And especially for staff, Ms. Ozal and everybody who had to reschedule. Veronica, thank you for all that help. It won't happen again, but it was because we were held up with, at a site. So I can't think of a better excuse. We weren't just, uh, hanging out, although we were with kids. So it kind of makes sense.
And now we're hubmates.
That's right. We see each other every day from on the hall. So it works great. Dr. Wold, Ms. Felli, anything for good of the order from you?
No, we, we appreciate the time and the fact that we're timely. So I can go to my next meeting.
Okay, wonderful. Well, then I will adjourn the meeting at six thirty and I will see you all at the, the LCAP meeting in five minutes.
I will not be there. I booked something else because it wasn't on my calendar. So we'll have to catch up.
Sounds great. And thank you, everybody for watching. We're still here. Appreciate it.
Alright.